Good afternoon and welcome to our Milwaukee Press Club Newsmaker Virtual Luncheon minus the food. We're doing this for the third time digitally via Zoom and we welcome you all aboard. We know that these are extraordinary times and we appreciate the fact that you're taking time out of your starting your holiday weekend to join us with a very special guest in Milwaukee Common Council President Cavalier Johnson. We want to thank, before we begin our program, we want to thank our presenting sponsor that would be, I get this right, Spectrum News One said Gene reading off his sheet, and our sustaining sponsor Miller Cosn. And of course, there's our event partner, that would be Wizpolitics.com. They partnered with us for a continuing series of events in Milwaukee. They're events sponsored by UW Milwaukee, Wisconsin Academy of Global Education and Training, 1125 at PAFS, the Milwaukee Police Association, the Firm Consulting, the Medical College of Wisconsin, and Spectrum. So we thank them. Without our sponsors, of course, none of this happens. And thanks again to our members for helping us sustain through these very, very unique times. And thank you again for joining us this afternoon. Let's welcome our panel of journalists. That includes Allison Dur of the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, from today's TMJ4, Sean Gallagher, and from Milwaukee Neighborhood News Service, we have Edgar Mendez. So without further ado, it says on my sheet that you're the new Milwaukee Common Council President, but it's been a whole month. So I think we can dispense with the new Common Council President Cavalier Johnson, our Newsmaker guest today for the Milwaukee Press Club. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Gene. And yeah, you're right. It's been about a month, maybe even a month to the day that we've been in this position as Common Council President. So the new car smell has kind of worn off of me already. So yes, Cavalier Johnson, Common Council President. First off, I'd like to thank you, like to thank the Milwaukee Press Club and all the panelists for joining us today and for continuing to provide the opportunity for, you know, folks in Milwaukee and Wisconsin or greater area to have an opportunity to engage and to learn about the views and directions of leaders here in our community. So thank you all for doing that. I am new to this position, yes, but not new to Milwaukee, not new to the Common Council. But I still think though that there is an element of me that is unknown to folks. And so I just wanted to take a moment to talk about my background and my experience in Milwaukee. You know, I often tell folks that, you know, this year I'm going to be 34 years old and I started serving the community when I was a 14-year-old boy. So this will be 20 years of public service in one form or another for me. And that is really where I'd like to sort of pick up my story. So at 14 years old, I got involved in public service because I started participating in a program that I was recruited in with YMCA called Sponsor Scholar. And that program had the goal of getting kids from low-income communities that attended Milwaukee Public Schools like I did to go off to college, to be the first people in their family to go off to college. And I did that, went to UW Madison, I studied political science. But that same program had a goal of getting those same kids involved in public service and giving back. And so for me and some of my peers, you know, back then, we would get up every Saturday morning and we would do service projects. We would, you know, help seniors to shovel snow or rake leaves or go feed the homeless and do this and do that. And for me, I just fell in love with the aspect of service and giving back and serving the community. And I committed my life to doing that at that age. And, you know, before I left high school, I went down to South America to do some service there. We helped to refurbish the school for children in Chile. My first spring break in college was to New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina to help the folks on the Gulf Coast down there that were adversely affected by the hurricane. I studied abroad in London, working with the YMCA and at-risk young people who had had contact with law enforcement in London. I came back to Milwaukee and continued to work here. I've worked with young people and seniors in our community, young people trying to get their first summer job and trying to crack into the workforce that way, seniors retooling their resume in order to get back into the workforce for the last time. And continued on with my service as I was recruited to come down to City Hall for the first time in a community service position, a community outreach position in the mayor's office. So I've got to see both ends of the hall. I had run for county board supervisor twice unsuccessfully. The first time I was in a five-person race and I came in fifth place. I lost really, really badly. The next time I moved around, I mean, I'm a young person, young people move around a lot as I did when I was young, when I was even younger, when I was a kid, and ran for county supervisor again. My memory was that there were five people in that race as well and I came in fifth place. According to some journalists who have looked at it, there weren't five people. I believe there were seven people. And this time I didn't come in, you know, last place. I came in second to last. But I got less votes than I did the first time. So I kind of gave my face kicked in a little bit there again. But I stayed at it because I, for me, I've always felt that this is the best way to give back and to serve people and to wake up and make our community better. And so I had the opportunity to run for alderman in 2016 where I was successful in becoming second district alderman. And then after completing the first term, obviously we're here now. And I've been fortunate enough to be elected by my peers to serve as Common Council President. So that's a little background on me. Again, it's been about 20 years of service in one way or another in this community. And I'm looking forward to the next, you know, 20 years of being able to serve in this capacity and perhaps others as well.
Very good. So let's begin our questions with Allison Dur of the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel.
Hi, President Johnson. Thank you for taking our questions. I wanted to start out with kind of a broad question to understand what you see as the major legislative priorities for the Common Council in the coming years. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Allison, very much. I'll tell you that there are a number of goals that I have and I know that council members have. And we intend to, you know, work on those things as we move forward, not just in this year, but in the future years of this term as well. I can tell you for me that in order for us to accomplish those things, I think that there needs to be a collaborative approach. And that's the way that I've always looked at government. It's not always about, you know, who can, you know, scream the loudest or put out the most press releases. It's about, you know, who is able to work, you know, with folks, you know, across the aisle, folks who may differ from you politically in order to get things done. And so for me, I want to have a collaborative, intergovernmental approach. We should be looking to make investments in commercial corridors. There's all this talk and has been, you know, talk over the years about the developments that are happening downtown. And those are great. Those are wonderful. But there also needs to be investments in neighborhoods as well. And Milwaukee is a city that has, you know, a rich number of commercial corridors that, you know, flow throughout our neighborhoods. And in my past life, I also worked as a business improvement district manager. And so that's, that's an issue that's near and dear to me and to my heart. And when there's opportunities for us to improve, where there's opportunities for us to improve on business improvement districts, I want to take a crack at that. And I think that council members will want to take a crack at that as well. So whether you're talking about the great work that's been happening over the years in Bronzeville and on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, that's an opportunity there. When you look at the possibilities that are available on historic Mitchell Street on the South Side, that's a possibility there. When you think about the mosaic on Burla between Sherman and 60th on Burla Street, or when you think about Billard Avenue, for instance, which I've always, you know, thought to myself, it's got these very unique bones and could potentially be a Brady Street North. Those are things that I think, you know, that council members would want to work on. That's something that's very important to me. And the last term, I had the opportunity to work on the Office on Early Childhood Initiatives and we got the office up and running and it's operable now. And I think that there's going to be an appetite to continue working on, you know, those sort of issues. I certainly have an appetite to work on those things to bolster the funding that goes into that office and the reach that's available there. Gun reform is something that's important to me, considering the neighborhoods that, you know, I came from and many council members came from. As a matter of fact, the neighborhoods that three of the four, you know, major principals in local government have come from, like 53206, myself, County Executive Crowley, and County Board Chair Mercilia Nicholson. And we came from 53206. We saw the issues that people who live in those neighborhoods face. And gun reform is at the top of the list for some folks that live in those areas. They're concerned about their, they're concerned about public safety. And that's one where I think we have an opportunity to make a tremendous impact in as well. And then of course, shared revenue and revenues generally to local units of government is going to be something that's critically important for us to talk about. And I'm looking forward to having those conversations as well.
If I could just follow up quickly on the gun reform question, you know, what, what do you see as, you know, possible measures that could be implemented at the city level?
Yeah, well, not necessarily at the city level because, as we know, gun law in this state is controlled in Madison. So I think it's going to take for, again, a collaborative measure, a collaborative approach in order for us to be able to really affect that. I've gotten to the point over the course of the last term and it'll, it'll continue this term too, I'm certain, where I've encouraged constituents of mine that have issues that are actually state issues to not just, you know, reach out to me because, you know, I will be your voice, I'll be your advocate, but to also, but to do two other things as well. One, to reach out to your friends and family who live in other parts of the state that likely are represented by the party in power now and let them know how their policies adversely affect, you know, your lived situation in your neighborhood. And then two, also reach, as you're reaching out to me as an elected official, also reach out to, you know, Speaker Boss, also reach out to Senator Fitzgerald, Majority Leader Fitzgerald, and let them know how policies in the jurisdiction of the state government adversely affect people's lives here in the city of Milwaukee. So I think using that approach, we could have a greater impact on gun violence. One of the things that I'm interested in working to do is getting information from the police department after, you know, a certain number of shootings and homicides occurred and working with representatives from other levels of government, working with our Office of Bonds Prevention and, you know, getting out there and really blowing that message up so that we continue to put pressure on the state so that they can look at and take action on the accessibility of guns that adversely affect people in communities like ours and particularly, you know, communities of color in Milwaukee.
Thank you so much and I will hand it up to Sean.
Yeah, thank you. President Johnson, I know a lot of people are preparing for a three-day weekend with Memorial Day on Monday. A lot of other people are just still out of work as a result of everything going on with COVID-19. But the next business day that we deal with is going to be Tuesday. And that's when the moratorium on evictions will end in the state. As of now, we haven't heard anything about that being extended. But come Tuesday, a lot of people may not know what they need to do with their home that they can't afford to pay rent for. With the CARES Act having money that can be given to certain cities, do you have any plans on how you can help disperse that money and how it could impact the housing crisis that we're dealing with as a result of COVID-19?
Thank you, Sean. Well, I'll tell you this, that I know and I'm very appreciative that the governor has taken some action on that. You may have seen just recently, some news come out about the plan for the Department of Administration and Governor Evers to help people with, you know, rents as that moratorium comes to a close. And I think that's something that many people across Milwaukee and across the state, quite frankly, are going to be tapping into in order to help with this situation. Folks may be aware of this, they may not be aware of this. But when the money for the, for the CARES Act has come down to local governments, it seems to be that the chief executive is the one that has discretion about how that money is spent. So that's, that's a conversation that we'll have to continue having with the mayor. Maybe there'll be some sort of opportunity for us to pair some of the CARES Act funding and spending with what's happening over at the state level in order to tackle this. Because as you, you know, well know, and many of the viewers likely will know as well, the ratio of home ownership versus rental properties in Milwaukee has been flipping over the years. You know, we, you know, will continue to advocate for more people to own properties because that helps to, and, and live in those properties as owner occupants because it helps to stabilize our neighborhoods. And that's something that we desperately need. Again, going back to neighborhoods like 53206 and others, when folks have some certainty in their home life, that creates stronger, more stable neighborhoods, which is good for not just that zip code and, but it's good for areas around it and for our city and region generally. So that's a long-winded way to say, I guess, that there is a state program that's, that's on the way. And there may be a possibility for us to amplify that with something at the local level. However, again, because the executive is in charge of those funding, of those funds, that's going to take some working with the mayor in order to accomplish, if there was to be something above and beyond what Governor Evers and the Department of Administration at the state level are looking to implement.
And I spoke with people over at Community Advocates that fear that extra money may only help another month or two. They are saying that this could be two, three times worse than the Great Recession as far as the housing market goes. As far as COVID-19 altogether, I mean, this is an incredible time that you are taking this position as the lead of the Common Council. I mean, what can you do to help people rebound after everything that they're going through right now?
Well, thank you for that. Yeah. And I think, you know, when it comes to, you know, what, what we were just talking about in terms of the housing issue, when it comes to, you know, the effects that we're facing in terms of economics as well, because people have lost their jobs in this or they, or they haven't been able to work in this or businesses are facing tough times and potentially may not be able to bring, you know, folks back, you know, because of this. It's going to be on us, you know, to make sure that we're putting policies in place to make sure that we're being helpful to businesses. I know there was some mention just, just a few days ago about a business restart program. And I had the opportunity to be briefed on that and was very, very supportive on that because when that program goes into place and we're able to help small businesses, actual small businesses. Now, that's key in Milwaukee because as we know, small businesses are the ones that help to employ and put food on the table for the vast majority of workers, not just in Milwaukee, but in Wisconsin and in the United States. So it's going to be important for us to make sure that we support policies to make sure that businesses like that are able to be up and to be running and to get those employees back in the door so that they can put food on the table for their, for themselves and for their families. And those are the things that myself and my colleagues on the council are going to be supporting because that's going to be critically important. In addition, we know that this has had a negative effect on people of color. And so we have to constantly keep in mind, you know, the direction that we want to take and keep in mind as well that whatever we decide to do could potentially have, you know, impacts that are more devastating to certain populations than others. So we have to keep those things in mind as well. And I'm certain that, you know, council members, the city government generally will keep those things in mind moving forward.
President Johnson, thank you. Good luck going forward. And we're going to toss it over now to Edgar Martinez, or Edgar Mendez, I'm sorry, with the Milwaukee Neighborhood News Service.
Thank you. Hello, Council President. So my question is, and Sean mentioned it, you know, we're going into a holiday weekend, Memorial Day weekend. And, and with that holiday is going to be increased activity in the public and just what's going on within the suburbs with businesses opening. It just seems that the, the whole safer at home, stay at home movement is losing steam. So with that being said, what steps is, is the council taking to work with, with business owners, with businesses, with residents, and even with law enforcement to ensure that, that we can stay as safe as possible going forward and minimize the risk of another large COVID-19, you know, infection rate here in Milwaukee?
Sure. And thank you Edgar for that question. For those folks who've been paying attention to, you know, the, the way these orders have come down, whether it be from the local level or from the state level, I think people know that the order from the Milwaukee Health Commissioner came down, I think, just before, the initial order that is, came down just before Governor Evers' safer at home order. And that, that order had no end date. And that was for a reason, is because the city wanted to make sure that when we look at, you know, looking to reopen our economy and bringing people back to work and opening places up where, you know, there could be congregations of folks that we did so based on the science that is available. And in this order that came out just yesterday, there is some loosening that's attached to it. But, and this is what I think is key to your question, when there's loosening that happens, that there also are parameters that aren't in place so that we don't have widespread contact that we used to have in the world prior to, you know, the emergence of coronavirus. Okay, so as businesses are reopening in Milwaukee and in the suburbs too, I think, there are parameters that are in place to say, hey, you know, we ought to make sure that folks still have their space. Folks still should wear masks. The employees on the front line should have, you know, protective, a personal protective equipment that's available, including, you know, the Plexiglas shield, let's just say for somebody at a, at a cash register, to the extent possible. If you can order, you know, food and take it to go, you know, that's something that we ought to do. There's not going to be dine-in service at restaurants and bars as of yet. There are still caps on the number of people that are able to go into, you know, a place of worship or a gym so that we can minimize the congregation of folks so that we don't have, you know, additional outbreak. So, so those are things that, you know, the city has enacted and the city has put forward in its orders. In addition to as well, the testing sites that are available, one in my district at Midtown Center on the northwest side of the city and one on the south side at Umost that have seen, you know, thousands of people since they've been launched and staffed by the National Guard. And I know that, you know, there's speculation about whether or not those sites are going to remain. But I know that other health systems are working to step up to provide those same services, you know, if or when, you know, those sites were not to be available to constituents as well. So, so we're making sure that that information is available to the public so they know where to go in order to get tested. We're making sure that these best practices are known so that when businesses do come back online, it's not, again, the world that once was, but it's a world that understands that we have, you know, this deadly disease in place. And then two, I think overarching all of this is the fact that, you know, that, you know, we wouldn't be, we, we would be encouraging people to make sure that they stay at home still if they don't feel safe. If they don't feel safe going out just yet, make sure that you stay home, continue to shelter in place, continue to do all those things that you have been doing. You know, just because the Supreme Court, you know, knocks down an order or just because, you know, a, a number of communities, you know, allow their orders to expire doesn't mean that this thing has gone away. I know that people are itching to get back out, you know, to, to some semblance of normalcy. But there's no vaccine yet. Okay, so we have to keep that in mind. And we also have to make sure that, especially for the populations that are the most vulnerable, African-Americans, Latinos, that we send that message out as well that if you don't feel safe doing that, if you don't feel safe going out, then you still have the option to shelter in place and stay home.
Right, thank you. So, so I, I wrote a story that was published yesterday that was talking with the owner of Lopez Bakery, which, as you know, has been on the south side, has been open for nearly 50 years. And when I spoke with her, she was, she's on her last pines, is almost about to close. And she was, she was kind of upset. She thought it was unfair that the businesses in the suburbs were opening, not because she thinks it's time to reopen, just because she sees that now they're able to go back into business while she's, you know, fighting for her business's life. What kind of support is the city planning to provide to those Lopez bakeries and all the other, all the other small businesses in Milwaukee that, that are on the verge of going under?
Yeah, thank you for that. And trust me, I, I am very sympathetic to businesses that want to get up and get running and get back to normalcy. I, I really am. Look, I, when I go home at night, you know, I, my wife, I, I think really wants to get out. I got three kids that have been, you know, cooped up in the house. I try to get them in the car and take them on a ride just so they can breathe a little bit and see the world outside of their bedrooms and in the living room. So I totally understand, you know, the desire for that to happen. And that's why I'm excited that, you know, the direction the city has taken in terms of making sure that these business restart grants are available and available to small businesses, such as the Lopez Bakery. And so application for that should be coming out pretty soon. And we'll, we'll be looking to help to make sure that businesses have the opportunity to tap, to tap into those funds so that they can have, have that lifeline. Because we know that small businesses have suffered, you know, throughout this. In addition to, in addition to that, I know there's been some conversations about providing additional assistance to businesses down the line through our community development block grant structure. And that's something that's forthcoming. But in the meantime, you know, we're going to, we're looking to use money from the CARES Act to make sure that we're supporting small businesses in Milwaukee. Because as I said before, we are under no illusion, I certainly am not, about the importance of small businesses in the city of Milwaukee, across the state of Wisconsin and across the United States. They employ the vast majority of people, you know, across our nation. And so we need to make sure that we're doing what we can in order to protect small businesses, just like Lopez Bakery. And that's exactly what that plan is, is made out to do.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I'm going to pass it back to Allison.
Thank you.
I wanted to go back to the coronavirus. And as you mentioned, and there's been a good amount of coverage, communities of color have been disproportionately affected by the coronavirus pandemic in Milwaukee and around the nation. You know, and many have said that the virus has brought to light these deep-seated, long-existing disparities, right? You know, so what should be done as the city and surrounding communities, the state, start to reopen to guard against further disproportionate impacts on communities of color? And even longer term, how do you think the city should go about addressing these deeper disparities that have come to light in a really tragic way?
Yeah, and to that, I, I would, I would simply say that I know that sometimes people run away from the topic of race and the topic of racism in communities like ours. And I think that this is emblematic of the fact that you can't, right? There are impacts that people feel in this community based off of where they live, based off of the economic and educational opportunities that they have. And those things are usually squarely aligned around the color of your skin. And so I say to that, I mean, the, the time for people to tuck away and cower away from that conversation is over. It, it's got to end. And this is a gleaming example of, of just that. You know, when the coronavirus was initially starting to pick up steam across, across the country, including here in Milwaukee, there was an old saying that, that somebody said that has stuck with me. I had heard before, hadn't heard it in some time, but, but it certainly has stuck with me. And that's that when society gets sick, black folks get the flu. And that, I think, is emblematic of what's, of what's happened with this, right? The most, the, the people who've been most negatively impacted by this are people of color. Again, primarily African-Americans and primarily Latinos. And we got to do a better job of making sure that we address those things. So what do I think should happen in the future in terms of this? I think that it was wholly justified and wholly right for the sites to be set up in the neighborhoods where they were and primarily African-American, that the National Guard coronavirus testing sites, that is, to be set up where they were in neighborhoods that are primarily African-American and primarily Latino. Although anybody could come and get a test at the sites, it's important to make sure that those sort of resources are available in the communities that are the most adversely affected, right? So we got to make sure that, that that happens. I know that the, I know that the healthcare sector in Milwaukee has been looking at this, especially, you know, partners over at Ascension. And I think that this is a reason, this is a reason why the healthcare industry and the healthcare sector here in Milwaukee should be working collaboratively together to address, you know, the needs of people of color in our community and working collaboratively in a way to make sure that we're tackling, you know, those social detriments of health on that end and working with levels of government in order to, to, to tackle those things as well. You know, I think that there's been a lot of conversation about the, the supply chain and access to, you know, health and access to, you know, healthy and fresh produce and foods like that. So there's an opportunity for grocery stores to see what the impacts have been here and to rethink, you know, where some of those investments are and, and make better and stronger investments in neighborhoods like the ones that are most adversely affected by, by coronavirus. So there are a number of things that I think can be done on this, not just from the city government level, but across the spectrum, across multiple sectors, across the, 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 the supply chain grocery sector, across the healthcare sector, across the philanthropic sector. And then of course, again, across, you know, our sector in, in government as well. So again, I've said, you know, a lot of times in, in the course of this conversation, that's going to take collaboration in order to tackle the issues that we face here in this community. This, that, that's no different. The way that we address how we're going to move forward, looking at how coronavirus has affected primarily communities of color here in Milwaukee.
To follow up, you know, even going back to the beginning of the pandemic. The disparities in health in so many ways in Milwaukee are well-known, well-documented. Was enough done on the front end to protect communities of color? How, how do you think about that?
Was, and I'm sorry, you, you were paused for a minute there. So I didn't hear the first part?
I apologize. Was enough done on the front end to protect communities of color, understanding that disparities in health and, and many other sectors have long existed? I apologize. I have a call that keeps coming in, but did you, were you able to hear my question?
Yeah. So your, your question generally is, was enough done on the front end in order to protect communities of color when, on the, and the onset of coronavirus? Well, I, I think that the answer to that would be no. I think the answer to that would be no, but I think it goes beyond, or it precedes coronavirus. As you just said, you know, the conditions that surround communities of color, the negative conditions that surround communities of color have been present in Milwaukee for decades. For, you know, forty, fifty years, you know, these things have been gone, these things have been around in the trajectory of health in these communities and the social determinants of health in these communities have been on a downward trend for quite some time. So if those things were not addressed at that point, then no. The communities of color in this community would have been left unshielded from that. But again, that goes back to, you know, the, to a time where Milwaukee was, you know, known as the machine shop of the world and, you know, people who lived in neighborhoods like the one we're talking about, the most distressed neighborhoods, you know, had an opportunity to go to work, you know, at a place in the morning. All you needed was an alarm clock and a strong back to have a good family supporting job with a living wage. When those jobs started drying up here and going south to right-to-work states in the southern United States and even further south to Mexico and overseas, that left a gaping financial hole. And in order for people to have the type, the, the type of health outcomes that we would like to see, they've got to have access, they've, they've got to have access to living wage jobs. Yeah, that's a critical part of the foundation. You need access to economics, to employment. You need access to quality education. You need access to a stable home. And if you don't have those things, then the bottom starts to fall out. So for decades, Milwaukee's been grappling with those things. And yeah, if those, if, if folks don't have access to those, then, then when something like this comes around, yeah, they're going to be, it, that is akin to having a compromised immune system, you know, for the community. And that's, and that's exactly what happened. And that's why I think you see this, the discrepancy that you see in communities of color versus other communities in terms of coronavirus.
Thank you so much, and I will pass it on to Sean.
Yeah, thanks, Allison. So speaking, kind of going off of her question, you're talking about the front end, not enough done. What can be done on the back end to make sure that communities of color aren't impacted even more than they already are? Not just on a health front, but on all of those economic fronts. And back to my other question before, evictions and making sure that these folks who might be out on the streets because of everything that they're facing.
Yeah, thank you. And, and that's, that's a good question. I think, again, what we discussed in terms of the governor's plans and potential local and local plans to complement what, you know, is going to happen come Tuesday, after the moratorium is over, we see what's coming down the line. And there is an action coming in anticipation of that, right? I think that sort of, that sort of thinking is what is necessary in order to combat not just this, but other things that adversely affect communities of color as well. We had seen what was happening in terms of the education system over the course of, you know, several years. And there was a reaction to help to raise the, to, to put a referendum for it in order to get more money flowing into Milwaukee Public Schools classrooms. We see what the impacts are in terms of coronaviruses on small businesses like Lopez Bakery that Edgar had mentioned. And we are putting forward a plan in order to tackle that. So that again, is the sort of thinking that we need to, you know, put forward and embrace, you know, going forward. Whether we're talking about our response to COVID-19 or we're talking about the long and systemic issues that have faced and adversely, you know, affected communities of color in Milwaukee throughout the years. You see what's happening. Let's put forward plans that would help to mitigate the situation and hopefully eliminate those situations that are adversely affecting, you know, these, these vulnerable communities.
And understanding that what's going on in Madison, people will have to wait for. When they see what's going on with unemployment right now, they may not necessarily trust what's going on in Madison and may look to their more local leaders to try and help them here in Milwaukee. Knowing that you have a relationship with Tom Barrett, you were staff assistant with him. How will that help you get things done in Milwaukee?
Well, I think that just in some degrees, my relationship with the mayor will be, will be useful. It, it allows, you know, for there to be open, honest, free-willing discussions, I think, without a veil. Because I know him, you know, he knows me, we had the relationship that we did when I was, when I was staff assistant to him. And I think that, you know, he and his administration understand the difficulties that are facing families and businesses in Milwaukee as well. And I think, you know, because of the relationship that we have, we're able to have, we're able to have those frank and honest discussions. It's not that we'll agree on everything. But I think though, that it puts us in a better position to be able to work together in order to put forward, you know, programming that's going to be beneficial to the folks who, who, who live here. And I think you're absolutely right. I mean, people probably will look to us. I mean, they generally do, right? On state level issues, as I said, I just got contacted the other day about, or no, a couple of weeks ago rather, by a constituent who was concerned about the spread of coronavirus and, you know, people playing basketball in very close contact at Milwaukee County Parks. You know, the same time they go out and vote for me, they also vote for their county supervisor, but they reach out to me because I'm their alderman, they can see me, they hear from me, they can touch me, you know, we hold, you know, a number of community meetings. So I'm available that way. And so I think that what you said is, is spot on. They will reach out here. But then it's up to us to try to fashion, you know, programs that are going to be beneficial to them. And then also to speak up on their behalf and encourage for programs at a larger scale. Because with anything that happens, the state's going to be able to provide, you know, a larger financial benefit in terms of program creation than we would be able to do at the local level alone. So it's up to us to also be their voice and to be their advocate on those things as well.
Thank you, President Johnson. Edgar?
Right. So Council President Johnson, we're, we talked about vulnerable populations and there's also another vulnerable population. And that's people who are struggling with opioid and other drug addictions. Last year, Milwaukee County broke a record for, for drug overdose deaths. And, and from what I, what I've been reading and hearing, it seems like we're on, we're on that pace as, as people who are struggling with addictions are reluctant to continue treatment or seek treatment or, you know, are under increased pressure right now with, with the, with the pandemic. What steps has the, the council taken in? Can they take in the future to, to outreach to that population and then work with organizations that I'm sure have adjusted their service delivery models or, or just maybe overwhelmed right now with just the amount of people that are struggling with, with addiction?
Thank you. Well, I know that the council, under the leadership of Alderman Michael Murphy in the last term, and I believe continuing in this term as well, had created a task force to look at, you know, those very issues. The, it was a city-county task force actually on, you know, cocaine and opioid abuse. So I don't know the answer to that right off top. That's something that I would love to connect with you, you know, offline to have a conversation about. But again, I know that task force had been working. I would, I don't doubt, you know, what you're saying about, you know, you know, people who have those sort of addiction problems, not wanting to go out and be a part of, you know, some of the things that they had been in the world prior, especially, you know, since, you know, coronavirus has, has come down. So that's something that I'd like to connect with you offline because I don't know the answer to that off top.
Thank you. And just kind of changing track, I, I've noticed since the pandemic started that not just organizations or community-based organizations or organizations affiliated with the city, but just regular people, artists, business owners have become champions of the community and have organized their own grassroots efforts to provide food, provide services, provide entertainment for, for people that have been impacted by the pandemic. And so how, going forward, you know, once maybe as things go back to the new normal, how does the city engage those people who have come out as community champions and, and keep them motivated and keep them involved in the efforts that they've, they've been doing, taking part in over the past few months?
Yes. Well, I, I'll tell you that whether it's a proclamation that's done by the mayor or whether it's, you know, commendation that's come from, you know, members of the council to individuals or businesses in their district that have gone above and beyond in order to make a difference in our community. The city, I think, has a very fine tradition of honoring, you know, individuals and organizations who have done exactly what you're talking about. I am very certain that that will continue. And, you know, I, I'll give you, I'll give you an example that, you know, I often tell people because, you know, in these jobs, we get a lot of contact, especially when you're a, an alder person in the city of Milwaukee. Again, when there's a state level issue, when there's a county level issue, when there's a, when there's an NPS issue, we get contacted. And that includes, of course, you know, the, 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 the issues that are within our jurisdiction as well, the city issues too. So we get contacted a lot. And I have often told people when they're concerned about something in their neighborhood in my district or if they're communicating with me from another part of the city, that, you know, you don't really need permission from us to do what is good, you know? You don't need, you know, Alderman Johnson to come in and, you know, give the blessing for you to, you know, take a frozen turkey to, you know, your neighbor who may be going through something during Thanksgiving. And often you'll give the example of Andre Lee Ellis and the work that he's done with We Got This. Andre saw a problem that was happening in his neighborhood with a young man. And he took that young man under his wing, created a mentorship program just with him. And then slowly but surely, week after week, it continued to snowball and to snowball and to snowball into the program that we all know and love today that positively affects so many young people, so many young men of color in Milwaukee. And, you know, those are the sorts of things that I think we should be highlighting. Those are the sorts of, sorts of heroes that we should be celebrating. We have done that. And I'm certain, I'm more than certain, that that, that same thing is going to happen, you know, in the future here as well. Because we have seen the stories, we have read them, we have watched them. We know, you know, folks are out there doing good work, serving the people of this city who are the most vulnerable and need that help the most. And we couldn't be more grateful for the work that they're doing. We want them to continue doing it. And we want to acknowledge them for doing it as well.
Thank you. Back to you, Allison.
Thank you so much. I wanted to switch gears a little bit. We're in a moment where the city has seen a spike in homicides with nearly half of them related to domestic or family violence. You've seen two mass shootings, the Molson Corps shooting and the shooting last month, I believe, where five people were killed in a home on Milwaukee's north side. I'm curious, you know, when budget time comes around, and I think one thing you hear all the time in budget time is budgets are moral documents, right? How do you think about that balance between funding police and funding, you know, public health, which includes the Office of Violence Prevention?
I see it as critically important. Look, last term, in the last term, towards the beginning of my time in office, you know, we were successful in putting forward legislation to get the name changed, even, even a, a simple tweak, like a name change to the Public Safety Committee. And we changed the name from that to the Public Safety and Health Committee. Because I thought it was important to make sure that the conversation around public health did not get put on the back burner, put in the backseat. And all of the oxygen in the room got sucked up by, you know, departments that are made up of people who have badges and wear guns. And that's no slight on, you know, the police department or fire department. They serve critical and necessary work functions in this, in this city. And we appreciate, you know, them and the things that they do for us and for our constituents. But public health is a key component to that as well. So, you know, for me, I have consistently been a supporter of the Office of Violence Prevention. As a matter of fact, before I had the opportunity to be elected, I worked directly with the Office of Violence Prevention to put on a gun buyback program in order to get, you know, several hundred guns off the street of Milwaukee. Since I have been in office, I've worked directly with the Health Commissioner, with the Office of Violence Prevention in order to promote things like Gunlock giveaways that have been sponsored through that office. The Blueprint for Peace is a document that I supported the, the creation of and the community input that was able to be put into a document like that to steer us in a way towards greater public safety and greater public health with input from people directly in our neighborhoods. So in terms of the budget, I think I've been pretty solid on that. I think the whole reason why the office is what it is right now is because overall, generally, council members across the board have been supportive of that because we've seen the value that that office brings and that violence prevention brings and health in terms of public safety brings. And I think you're going to continue to see, you know, our efforts around that continue to, continue, continue to grow. And I think it's only, I think it's only appropriate, you, you, you cannot have, you cannot have a city where incidents like the one that you just mentioned over on 12th Street, I believe it was, last month, where somebody gets access to a gun and they create this havoc and tear the heart out of a neighborhood, out of a family, out of a community, and simply respond with, you know, people that are coming in to do an investigation, sweep up and then move on. You have to have somebody there who's got, and in an organization there that's got some caring and got some heart and who knows the community best. And that's exactly what the Office of Violence Prevention does. That's what their partners do. I'm incredibly, you know, thankful for them and the, and the tough work that they do going into situations like that. And I think our community is better off because of it. And I think our community is better off because of it. So I think the the council's going to continue to to maintain a posture of support for for things like that in this budget and in future budgets as well.
Thank you so much, and I will pass it up to Sean.
And I guess, following up on that question, I feel like it was just a few months ago that a lot of us were outside of your house talking about that shooting that happened where your car was hit. How much does that influence what you do when it comes to violence prevention in this role?
Yeah, you know, I had the opportunity to have a discussion just the other day. And we talked about how my lived experience before getting to this position, before being elected in the first place, actually, the competition was with Allison. And not just my experience, the experience of, you know, the the new county executive, the experience of the new county board chairwoman. We bring those experiences to bear in the positions that we have, you know, right now. Those experiences in, you know, five through two zero six with, you know, sometimes eviction, food scarcity, seeing violence, hearing violence on a on a on a daily basis. Those things leave indelible scars, you know, on, you know, your back. And you carry those things with you into positions like this. And that experience is one that I carry with me as well. Having my son, you know, afraid because he heard a gunshot just outside the house. And thankfully, my daughters, who I believe were one year old at the time, didn't have to, didn't have to experience much of anything because they were they were asleep, they were taking their nap. But it's just imagine, you know, what it would have been like if they were older. And I think about how, not just my kids, but I think about the impacts of that things like that have on other kids throughout Milwaukee. And going back, you know, the past several years, the number of kids that, you know, have been shot and some unfortunately killed by people's reckless actions with guns. So we bring those things to bear. I remember, you know, when I was younger, living in five through two zero six, the case of mistaken identity. And my cousin, who was sitting on our front porch, was shot five times because somebody thought that he was somebody else. And, you know, I would I would say that it was an accidental shooting, but you don't accidentally pull the trigger five times, right? So those are those are the things that we bring, you know, with us to positions like these. And those are the reasons why, you know, I want to work on, you know, the gun reform and the way that I said I wanted to do it. Working with other elected officials, working with the Office of Violence Prevention in order to put pressure on the state to 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 tackle these very important issues that, again, primarily affect people of color in Milwaukee. In the time that I've been elected, I think even before that, I have worked, you know, to make sure that when the vigil for homicide victims at the end of the year takes place, that I'm present. And I hear every single name. And throughout the year, you know, I see a lot of the stories, you know, by you guys that's, you know, in the news or in print, you know, about the people behind these names and the families behind these names that have experienced this tremendous loss. And it's important that we don't forget that. And it's important that we make sure that as we move forward as a community and as policymakers that we are bringing these things to bear in order to develop policies, again, that are beneficial to these to these neighborhoods so that we stop this sort of stuff from happening down the line.
I'm going to jump in here because we're just about out of time. We did have one question from our audience, Council President Johnson. Please expand on your introductory comment about an intergovernmental approach to your office. Have you, County Executive Crowley and County Board Chair Nicholson already taken some preliminary steps in that direction? And if so, what ideas are you considering?
Yeah, thank you. We haven't come up with, you know, ideas just yet because I think that for all of us, we're still getting our bearings about us. We're still, you know, getting, you know, settled into our offices. I have had the opportunity to speak with both of them. And I'm and I know that they have had an opportunity to speak themselves as well. Learned that from watching the county executive's recent Newsmaker luncheon last week Friday. So as we continue to move forward, we'll 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 have the time to have those sort of conversations. We all know each other. We all have worked together in the past on a number of things, you know, in and outside of government. So those things are going to be coming to bear down the line. And I'm certain that we're going to be able to deliver for this community. I just would caution folks again that, you know, the things that we're up against, you know, as new and young leaders are decades in the making. So the change that we all want to see may not happen tomorrow necessarily, but trust and believe that all of us have a true passion and desire for service in this community. And we're going to be working towards that end, you know, each and every single day that we get out to go to work.
One more question from Dr. Jennifer Potts, who wrote in right at the start, asking about Center Street and your discussion about the north side and developing business quarters. Anything you can speak to in particular about Center Street and the Center Center Street bid number thirty nine in particular?
Yeah, I know that that Business District, well, easily right down the street from it. I traverse it, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty often. I think it's got some really nice bones as well and a tremendous opportunity to move forward as well. I think that Business Improvement District is one that would be ripe for the type of the business development program, Business Improvement District program that I was mentioning. And I'm glad that Dr. Potts mentioned that because I'm not talking about just going into any business district. I'm talking about the ones that have the infrastructure in place in order to support greater technical assistance that has the infrastructure in place to support, you know, signage grants and the like. And that infrastructure that I'm talking about is the one that she oversees herself as a Business Improvement District. And so it's my goal to work with council members in order to establish that over years, a pot of funding that would be able to be directly flowed into Business Improvement Districts like hers, not ones that are in affluent, you know, neighborhoods that don't need it, but ones that are in neighborhoods that are impoverished. So that we can bring those Business Improvement Districts up, have some life breathed in them, have some additional funding that's invested into them and create opportunities, not just for those business owners, but for the people who live in the neighborhoods on either side of those streets. Because as we know, again, it's those small businesses that are the lifeblood of Milwaukee, of Wisconsin and of America, that employ the most people. And, you know, for people who live in, say, five through two zero six, and I know half the the men, half the African American men, by the time they get to my age, had been incarcerated, they face an uphill battle in terms of employment. The folks that are going to give those men and women the shot to work are the people who who own those businesses in those neighborhoods where they are. So that is another critical component to why I want to make sure we get something like that off the ground.
Milwaukee Common Council President Cavalier Johnson, thank you so much for your time this afternoon. We appreciate it. Let's hope this is the start of a relationship that we can keep going with more Newsmaker luncheons as time moves forward. As long as we're giving out the thank yous, special thanks to our panel of journalists, Allison Durr of the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Sean Gallagher of Today's TMJ Four and Edgar Mendez of Milwaukee Neighborhood News Service, as well as our sponsors, our presenting sponsors, Spectrum News One, and our sustaining sponsor, Miller Koss, and our end partner, whizpolitics.com and all of their partners, which include UWM, Wisconsin Academy of Global Education and Training, eleven twenty five at PAPS, the Milwaukee Police Association, the firm Consulting, the Medical College of Wisconsin and Spectrum. If you like what you saw today and you're wondering, how can I become a part of the Milwaukee Press Club? Just go to milwaukeepressclub.org. And even more importantly, if you like what you saw and heard today and would like to support the Press Club's programming and events moving forward, please consider donating to our club's endowment. Go to the Press Club's website, again, milwaukeepressclub.org. Click on the MPC Endowment tab. That's the group that's doing spectacular things in developing young, pardon me, I'm a little biased being the president of Press Club, but they are doing fabulous things, and your generosity is always appreciated. Special thanks to my son Pump for keeping my basement dry here in the man cave and kept on chugging. You never even heard it. So I didn't go underwater today, and that's always a good thing. Also, special thanks to my son's dog, Charlie, for not barking in the middle of the newspaper event. Thanks to all of you for being here today. Please come back, keep an eye on our website as always for more Newsmaker and Behind the Headlines events and other things the Milwaukee Press Club is doing. We're staying busy even in the midst of a pandemic. This is a unique time, obviously, and we appreciate you joining us today. And we hope to see you some more in the future. Take care, have a great Memorial Day weekend, be safe.